I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Call the meeting to order at 7:05 PM. With that, we'll move on to item number three, public comments. Is there any public comments? Is there any public comments? Here are no public comment. We'll move on to item number four, approved minutes of the August 7, 2018 regular meeting. Have a motion to do so.
Second.
Motion by Ann Marie, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
All abstained.
Chair votes aye, motion passes 4-0-1. Please note, this is Dankas abstention. Item number five is first selectmen's report. The only thing I was going to talk about tonight is actually in correspondence, so I'll discuss it when we get to correspondence. So we'll move over item number five. We'll move on to item number six, discussion take possible action regarding purchase of a fire apparatus. At our last meeting, I gave you a packet that was provided to us by the fire commissioners and the fire chiefs. Gave you the opportunity to review that. We have with us the chairman of the board of, excuse me, chairman of the fire commissioners and also FD two and three are here. So gentlemen, why don't you come forward in case there's any questions from the board or actually, Al, if you wouldn't mind just giving us a little five minutes on the truck itself, reasons behind it, and Chris, if you want to jump in and talk about repairs. But talking to the, Rory, we're recording, right?
Yep.
So if you can talk into the microphone so all of the people at home can hear what you have to say, particularly my mother.
Okay. The truck that we are replacing is a 21-year-old vehicle. It's had multiple problems in the past. You have a packet that I gave you in front of you with all, for the last two years, all the repairs we put into it. The invoices for the repairs and everything are there. There's also at the end, a projected what we're going to have to spend on it in the near future. There's about $30,000 in repairs that need to be done. The generator on it does not work. We were going to replace that this year. There is problems with the pump. The adjustment is as far as it'll go. We had this happen to another pumper a couple of years ago. It cost us $14,000 two years ago to repair that truck. And there's other things that need to be repaired on it. It comes out to about $33,000 worth of work. We have had discussions at the roundtables with the first selectmen about replacing this truck and in general, our fleet as a whole. This truck is the problem truck right now that needs to be replaced. It is the oldest truck in the fleet. NFPA recommends 20-year lifespan on the trucks. We tried to hold to that, but we've had trucks go out of here that were 30 years old. And that was replaced in 1999. It was a '69 with a '99. So it's not like we're trying to replace a truck that doesn't need replacing. Okay? We look at the trucks, we see what they're costing us, and sometimes you get to a point where you're throwing good money after bad because what's the next thing down the road on this truck that's 21-years-old that has been failing the last couple of years on us? And that's in your package, what's happened.
So Chief, if you could, talk a little bit about the truck itself, the advantages of this new truck?
This new truck?
The costs, the savings, things like that?
Okay. There was a question before when I was talking to Mr. Sewicki, how we ended up getting to this point. And what it was, the chief got a call from the first selectmen's office saying that there may be some money available for a new piece of apparatus. Chief turned around and put me in charge of trying to find a new piece of apparatus. We knew that with the money we had, we can't go out and usually what happens is you put together committee, specifications, everything, and you're talking, if you're looking at Sonya two years ago, $650,000. Oxford just got a truck for $700,000. So they're expensive. We happened to find a truck that is two-years-old, hasn't seen any service. It's a demo truck, okay? It did end up being a loaner for a couple of months to a department that ended up losing the truck until their new truck came in. And we're not concerned about that. Truck has more than we could get if we went out and just bought a straight demo truck right now. It has the bigger motor, which in this town is something nice to have, especially on this side of town, we go uphill no matter where we go out of the firehouse. But it will serve the town of Seymour and serve our needs as the fire department. Couple of things on it that are going to enhance us is we got Class A foam on the truck, which helps us put out fires faster. The guys won't take as much of a beating when they're going into the fires. It will carry all the hose that we normally carry. It has a generator. So there's a lot of little things on that truck that will enhance what we do. The truck itself, if you ordered that truck today, would be a $650,000 truck in the process. We're getting it for less than $500,000.
What's the normal turnaround time if, let's say, we did the full process and we spec'd out a truck and we purchased that? How long does it take generally to get one of these trucks?
I would say to write the specs itself, probably six months by the time we got it because there's a lot of legal stuff and a lot of things you really got to look at, make sure they're written properly, and then go out to bid 30 days. And then, right now, somewhere's around a year to get a truck in.
So we're looking at 18 to 19 months to get a truck. If this truck is approved and it goes through the process, Board of Finance and everything else, when will we receive this truck?
This truck actually is sitting in North Haven right now.
So we would have it almost immediately?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would say within 45 days, we'd have that truck for what they have to do with. They are actually new by this truck. They're putting all brand-new tires on it, new ladders, lettering the truck, mounting a lot of our equipment. They're adding the Automac snow chains. And I think that's about it. But they're doing a lot of stuff that was in that price there. And it's in the cover sheet that I gave Kirk of the specs.
That's in that packet you got last. And then just one other question, and Chief, I don't know if you can answer this maybe. Clay, this is a question for you. In the 18-19 budget which we're currently in, you're projecting 33,000 repairs to this truck. Obviously, if that's not needed, that money can now be put towards other trucks.
Yeah.
Because we always struggle every year with the repair line on our fleet. So this will certainly give you some more flexibility with that, correct?
Yes. Plus, we just put a lot of money into the ladder truck.
Ladder truck, yeah.
The repairs. So I mean, that's going to definitely offset that a little bit.
In your opinion, again, I don't know who's the best to answer, if you want to bring, Chris up as well. What's the next truck that we're looking at? Can I guess walk the selectman through just kind of what's next, timeframes, things like that? Because obviously, these trucks are expensive. Our plan, if you all remember, last year was to be able to purchase two trucks in cash, but unfortunately, we got cut to 2.1 million, so that plan got scrapped. So, but Chris?
If you go by years, it would be engine 15 on the hill. What we're going to do away from that for now, because that truck is in very good shape, engine 11, as Chief O'Shea stated, that we put probably $20,000 into that in the last two years. So it's decent. Right now, our ladder truck will be probably, without talking to the chiefs, would be the next truck we'd be looking at. I'm two months into my budget, and I've already spent $10,000 on that truck. But the price to replace that truck new is probably 1.5 million. So we're going to keep it going the best we could right now. Rough numbers on that truck, two and a half years I've been doing the maintenance, I'm probably close to $40,000 if we quit.
Okay.
It was just down for two months.
Right, yeah.
It was difficult to get a car.
Right.
Yeah. It's 13-years-old, and they don't manufacture parts anymore. I had to have everything made for that. So I would say, in my opinion, that would be the next truck we'll look at.
Okay. All right. Who has, on the board, has questions?
I think the, for what you're saying, you're getting the values very good, so that's smart. But I just want to make sure, even though it's lightly used, are we doing, did we do any due diligence just to make sure we're not inheriting any minor or possibly major issues with the truck?
Yeah, that truck last week was pump tested through annual inspection. It passed with flying colors. Like Chief said, we're getting all-new ladders, so we don't have to test those. They're brand-new. Got a DOT inspection at Fire Matic where the truck's coming from for repairs, and they went through and they fixed every little nook and cranny that was wrong with it, right down to the trim molding that had scratches. They're going to replace that. So right now, it's, once it's lettered and in there, it's a turnkey in service, and it doesn't need any foreseen maintenance till next year.
Okay.
So on top of the 33 we'd be saving, we're also saving 400 for a pump test, 700 for a DOT test, and a couple hundred dollars for ladder testing. So this would all go back into our budget for future repairs on something else.
And I just have one more question. I know you guys seem really happy with the truck, but since I've been involved in the town a long time and have had an opportunity to meet with a lot of the firemen over the past, I know there's a lot of times you settle for the truck you can get for the money. So this is the truck that you are need, that you need, and you're very satisfied with. It's not lacking anything.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, if we were able to spec it out for a couple thousand, a couple thousand more, a couple hundred thousand more, you know, we would outfit it a little bit different. But for what this truck is, it will suit us for the next 20 years perfectly fine.
Okay.
The other thing with the truck also, the maintenance records on the truck from Pierce, there were no red flags. That said, it would have been a problem.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anything else, gentlemen, you want to add? Excellent, thank you very much. Okay. So the process of this, and I'll let Ryan add anything if he'd like to, but if we approve this, well, this is two steps for us. First, we'll approve moving forward with this piece of equipment. When we get to transfers, at that point, we'll talk about how the money's going to move. That would then go to the Board of Finance next Tuesday. Assuming the Board of Finance approves that, it would come back to the special town meeting to be held the first Tuesday in September. And depending on if we got a quorum or not, if we did not, then the selectmen would act and do a special town meeting. So that's the process. So again, we're kind of approving. Yes, we want to move forward with the truck, and then the initial step, and then the Board of Finance at that point will discuss the financing and things to make sure they're comfortable with that. So if there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion that the town of Seymour move forward with the purchase of a Pierce Aero XT demo pumper with a job number 28886, as presented to us by the Board of Fire Commissioners.
So moved.
Motion by Trish, second by Ann Marie. I hear all seven, no issues with, okay. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained? Let's hear about it, motion passes 5-0. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, item number seven, discussion take possible action regarding draft report of the Charter Revision Commission. So in your packets, you all received two things. Number one, you received the recommendations, the Charter Revision Commission draft report and comments on Board of Selectmen recommendations, and then you also received a redline copy of the charter itself. So everybody had an opportunity to review this over the last week. So before we do anything, I'm going to just ask Attorney Driscoll just to give us a quick rundown of kind of the process, what we're looking at, if that's okay. And then, once we have that, we can have a conversation about what we like, what we don't, and then kind of take it from there. So, Ray?
Okay. So the, just to kind of back into this, the end date of September 7, 2018, which is the latest date of the board's approval, get approved this submission of amendments for the Charter, for the board's consideration at a election on November 16, 2018. In order to get to that process, we have four tonight, the board essentially had two options. Or it can make no recommendations for changes to the draft report that's been submitted by the Charter Revision Commission. Or it can make recommendations to change to the draft report that's been submitted by the Charter Revision Commission. If there are no recommendations for changing, the board can either revoke either approve or reject a proposed amendment or second amendment. We don't have to approve or prelog the proposed amendments. Those that are not considered to be considered later in the process. Or determined by the board to vote whether the Charter Amendment should be submitted or not be submitted, or is required to be mentioned. If there are valid questions, the board will determine that a question. And then, if there are exceptions, we'll also authorize the preparation of printing and dissemination of the contents, including the text printed material. In the event there are changes recommended in the draft report, then the board of Ed should vote on those recommendations tonight and after the adjournment of the board's selection meeting, commence a meeting with the Charter Revision Commission to confer on those recommendations. After you, if that is the case, and you confer those to Charter Revision Commission, then tomorrow night, they would need to discuss the amendments proposed to the draft report, and then by the board's selection, they'll reissue a part of the course of the process. After that, there will be a vote needed by the board selection to act upon that draft report. So that's essentially where we are. The draft report that's submitted to the board selection, and the board will assess whether or not they'll make recommendations for changes to that draft report.
Okay, so does any member have a question on the timeline or anything that Attorney Driscoll just shared?
What's the date again, Ryan, just so I have it straight?
So last date, July 8th.
Yeah.
September 7.
Which we have a regularly scheduled meeting before that. So if need be.
Then allow me to get it off the desk.
Okay, so everyone had an opportunity to review the charter, and we've had some conversation about some of the recommendations that we gave, or we suggested to the Charter Revision Commission. There was a handout that was provided, kind of review of our recommendations. So I'm not sure if you want to begin with those, you want to begin with the charter itself. What's the pleasure of the board?
I think it makes sense to review our recommendations and understand why, when they did agree and when they did not, before we get into the crux of the detail.
Okay. So we have the entire board here. If we, multiple people speak, they don't, they have a quorum. They don't have a meeting call until 7:30.
The, any conferring with the Charter Revision Commission should be after the adjournment meeting. You can discuss the comments that the board, the selectmen may have.
Yep.
Back and forth.
Okay, okay. All right, so let's all go to that summary.
So we'll put, we are supposed to take votes on these things before we talk to them.
Yeah, I think the initial step is whether or not the board is going to attempt there to be recommendations for changes to the draft report. If so, then we should vote on any of the issues we would like to discuss.
So everything we agree with, we vote on, that moves forward?
No, I know what I'm saying.
Sorry, they also have a desire to not have us come back to them with potential changes. So we'll see, we'll see where it goes, I guess. I mean, is it feasible that we can adjourn, or recess our meeting, meet with them, and then come back? Well, if we did it right at 7:30, that would seem to be pretty good, right? Well, I'm just saying, if there's an issue that we're not sure about, and instead of voting it up or down, we kind of just put a little star next to it, meet with them, and then we come back and actually vote on it. So then, to Stephon's point, we're not sending stuff back to them unnecessarily.
I agree. It seems backwards to vote on it before we can even get the feedback on why.
The way the statute is worded now, actually requires you to take action.
Okay.
All right, well, that's politics for you. Very good.
Or could we just go out of order until we get to 7:30?
Well, we can't, we can't do that.
Yeah, we still have to take.
We have to take action before we can talk to them.
Yeah. All right, so let's go through the draft report. Talk about the things that we have in there, then we can go through the charter itself, and then we can get to, all right, so after numerous meet, nevermind. Okay, so maximum number of members on boards of commission set at five. The commission has reduced the membership of the Board of Library Directors to five. All other elected and appointed boards and commissions remain the same. So again, we talked about shrinking the size of some of these boards. So they have just the library board of directors, which means Board of Finance stays at seven, Board of Ed stays at nine. Any issue with?
Also, appointed boards all stay at whatever they are, which some of them are quite cumbersome, in my opinion.
The reason we wanted to change it is because we are having a very difficult time getting bodies, and it's always the same people on everything, and everybody's getting tired. So without understanding why they made that decision, I don't agree.
Okay.
I would agree with what Trish said.
Okay, all right, so, there. Elimination of town meeting, agreed, see draft amended charter. That's one of the things that we had talked about with the charter. We haven't had a budget town meeting in, I can't tell you how long. So we talked about some new language, which was worked on in conjunction with the Board of Finance. I read through the language. We made one little change just to some semantics with dates and things like that. But I think that adheres to what we were looking for with that. So I think we're probably all good with that.
Yeah.
Yes.
So we'll put a check there. Discuss term limits. So let's all go to section 6.1.
Does anybody have an extra copy, by chance? I don't have a copy with me.
Because term limits only deal with the Board of Selectmen and the position of first selectmen. So I'll just read it. There shall be a seven-member Board of Selectmen consisting of the first selectmen and six other selectmen. The first selectmen shall be elected for a term of four years, and the selectmen shall be elected for a term of two years. Votes cast for the losing candidate for first selectmen shall not be considered as votes cast for a seat on the Board of Selectmen. Commencing with the election of November 2020, which should actually be 2019. An individual serving as first selectmen shall be limited to serving three consecutive terms. An individual serving as members of the Board of Selectmen shall be limited to serving three consecutive terms. In no event shall an individual serve in excess of 14 consecutive years on the Board of Selectmen. I think the first selectmen part is straightforward, where I guess the issue comes in, if a person were to serve three terms on the Board of Selectmen, so three two-year terms, that's six years, they would then be limited to just two terms, two four-year terms as first selectmen. It is my understanding that as of 2019, everyone will be starting at zero. Seeing some head bumps, so that's a good sign. Because initially, they didn't have that, and I said, well, then at the next election, the entire board would be wiped out.
Yeah.
So, all right, so let's take this in the two pieces. Number one, let's start with the four-year and two-year term. Any issue with that? Four years for the first selectmen, two years for the selectmen? No, no?
No, I mean, no. As long as it's staggered, otherwise, you're still going to lose a bunch of people at one time. And you have the potential to find a very difficult time replacing.
I mean, it can't really be staggered. It's every two years, there's no way to stagger that.
Every fourth year, you lose everybody.
Yeah.
That's fair, yep.
All right, so we're good with the four-year and the two-year?
That's fine.
Okay, so now let's talk about term limits. And honestly, I go back and forth on this, so.
I go back and forth on this only because, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, is that we're finding it hard to get people to volunteer to run or to sit on an appointed board or, you know, a board that you're running for. So to put a term limit on a selectman or any committee is, to me, is, if the person's doing a good job and is continuing getting voted on, in Congress, I can understand. When you get up to the state level, I can understand. But when you're in a town level where you have very limited people who are running and getting involved, why would you put a term on that?
Well, Trish?
I understand the intent, but I have the same concern. I mean, we can go back and look at all the committees and who's running, who's sitting here. So it's, I think it's more of a concern when people aren't given the option to decide who they want to sit in the seat.
Okay.
And at the town level, I don't see it as critical as a national or state level because it's a much smaller pool and limited resources.
Okay, Al?
I've shared my opinions before, but I'll repeat them. I'm against term limits. We live in a small community. Those two comments Trish and Ann Marie were made about a pool of candidates, people who are interested in doing, appointed or elected duties and tasks. If people are unhappy with those folks who have been elected, we position what the democratic process take its course. Both votes have been taken.
Stephon?
I think you know where I stand on this. I have the opposite opinion. I certainly agree with the opinion that it's hard to find people to be appointed to boards. I do not think it is difficult to find people to run to be first selectmen or a member of the Board of Selectmen. I think that is a separate level of responsibility from some of the appointed boards that you guys have mentioned, for sure. Quite a bit different.
See, and I go back and forth because I think, I think an election is the ultimate job review. If you're doing a good job, you get elected in. If you're not, you get elected out. However, on a local level, sometimes it's very difficult to get a person out of office once they've been there for a while because of name recognition, familiarity, things like that. So, you know, I go back and forth, but you know, you look at, you know, Shelton, Wallingford, and Prospect. Shelton, Mayor Lardy's been there 27 years. Prospect, Mayor Bob's been there 30-something years, and Wallingford, I believe, he's been there over 40. Sometimes I wonder if that's good for a town or not. I think sometimes having a fresh perspective is good. Sometimes I think change is good. So I kind of go back and forth on what's, you know, what's best. I see that, you know, the good and the bad. The last time we had term limits, we had, when Scott Barton was first selectman, his job was only held for a certain amount of time with the state of Connecticut. We had term limits. Scott had to leave early because he needed to maintain his job. So I think we lost someone who was an effective leader at that point because of the situation needing to be able to support his family at that point. So, but then again, 14 years is, or 12 years in this case, is a long period of time as well. So this is one that I honestly don't know. I've kind of gone back and forth on it, so.
I think if we were a larger community, it would be different. I think the size limits, limits us a bit more.
Is it possible to accept half of a recommendation and not?
So what the statute says is that you can accept, that it may preface the whole charter for exemptism or separate provisions thereof. So, strictly speaking, it says provisions thereof. I am prepared to be in particular that means this is a section as a whole.
So that's 6.1. So we either take the whole section or we don't.
But I think it could be read. I'm not sure there's a potential for that specific question. But I would, I believe, apparently, there's.
Okay.
If I could add one more thing to this argument, though perhaps not a legal question, I think it is Though perhaps not a legal question, I think it is certainly an ethical question if the Board of Selectmen is deciding on placing term limits on the Board of Selectmen. In my opinion, we have had a independent, an independent board make recommendations, and to me, it would be ethical to honor their recommendations.
Actually, let's take that a step further.
Especially because it's singling out selectmen. This is not a broad policy. This is strictly to the selectmen.
Can we break this out as its own separate question? Yeah, and then just let the people decide, do you want to have term limits or not? That way, if there's some uncertainty, is everybody okay with that? Then let's just let the people decide how they want to...
I mean, that seems like the fairest way to do it, but again, I might be in the minority on that. Al?
I think it's a fair point. It can be perceived as self-serving or commenting on this section.
And to be clear, I'm not accusing anyone of acting in their own self-interest.
Oh, no, 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 no.
I didn't take it that way, Stephon.
Well, Al did a little bit, but the rest was...
Loves to do that.
So, Emery? Oh, I'm sorry. Emery?
No, I think having the people vote is the way to go.
Trish? Okay, so then, we'll move that one forward, but we'll have it be its own separate question. This ballot's gonna be about four thousand pages long.
It takes some extra time to vote.
Okay, next three that we talked about, we talked about combining some committees. Combine Parks and Rec, combine Aging and Livable Communities, and then remove the Culture and Arts Commission. By remove, not remove, get rid of the commission, but remove it out of the charter. And all of those were discussed, and no action was taken.
I, again, without understanding their reasons, with the difficulty we have getting people to step forward, we were looking at Parks and Recreation and Aging and Livable Communities as areas we could combine to increase our resources rather than having people on multiple committees and leaving because they're wearing out. So I definitely disagree with those two.
Okay.
Not being recommended.
Emery?
I agree along the lines of Trish, but there was reasons for that.
Okay. Al?
Yeah, I was also curious as to the commission's ideas behind not combining Parks and Rec.
That would make sense, yeah.
Okay. Stephon?
So I think we're in an interesting position here where we all agreed on pretty much all of these recommendations at the beginning. Since then, unless we've talked to these people personally, we don't have any further context as to why they disagreed. So, my position, I don't think will change on any of these from what it was before this whole process started. So I, without understanding why they wouldn't recommend combining Parks and Rec and Aging and Livable Communities, I would say we, it is my belief that we should be combining those.
Okay.
What was the, can I just have a refresher? What was the point of us removing, why was it important for us to remove Culture and Arts from the charter? What was the issue?
We just didn't think it was...
It was established by ordinance, wasn't it?
Yeah, that it should just be an ordinance commission if we need it. It doesn't necessarily need to be in the charter.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just to free up hands and a little more easily, okay.
Yeah. And again, Parks and Rec and Aging and Livable Communities, because they have similar charges, particularly now with community services. Parks and Rec was, we're looking at one community services board. I can say in speaking with Mary McNellis, and I'm sure we'll get more when we talk to the Charter Revision Commission, that's not something that community services was keen on. They like having the two boards kind of being separate, which I found surprising. We can have those conversations, so I'll put an X next to that. Increase special town meeting limit from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand. They agree with that, so we're all on board with that one. Discuss quorum for the town meeting. They agree with us on that. Removal of positions of captain and lieutenant from the police department. They agree with us on that, so we're all okay there. Discuss removal prohibition of first selectmen holding multiple positions. That was discussed and not recommended. And again, just to clarify, because I think my comments have been taken wildly out of proportion at this point. We were talking only about state rep and state senator, no other elected position, so... So where do we stand on that? Stephon, you wanna go first?
Sure, I'll go first. This, I think, is the one that I disagreed with the recommendation going in. So on this topic, personally, I would side with the Charter Revision Commission's recommendation.
Al?
As we discussed it, we...
You did make comments about state rep or state senator. And in terms of holding multiple positions, I want to, you'd have to refresh my memory on what exactly that means. Does that mean you cannot work a part-time job or have another position? Or what exactly, I can't remember what we were getting at there.
The charter prohibits the first selectmen from holding any other elected position.
Right, so we're just talking about elected positions.
Were appointments included too? Because I believe we discussed some example of appointment to like a state position or something like that. I may be misremembering that.
I don't remember, but I think if you were appointed to a committee by the governor, that doesn't count, that's allowed?
No, I meant like a job, like a, I thought like a commissioner of something.
Oh, that would not be allowed.
Okay.
Yeah, that wouldn't be allowed.
But that's, is that not allowed by state statute, or is that not allowed by this?
I don't think that's allowed by the state of Connecticut.
Conflict, wasn't it, right?
Yeah.
Like a pretty direct conflict.
Yeah.
And again, just to go over my point of state rep and state senator. I mean, I feel very strongly that no one could represent the town of Seymour better than the first selectmen's position. If someone was to be arguing it should be that, you know, if you look at Westport, first selectman, Dunsby is the first selectman as well as a state rep. So, he's able to take these specific issues of Westport and fight for those directly at Hartford. I can make an argument, and I brought this up at CCM, and a lot of my friends will probably want to kill me, but get rid of the state senate, get rid of the state house, and just have one hundred and sixty-nine mayors and first selectmen do it. Is that feasible? Probably not, but if you're fighting for your community, I just think these positions... So that's the only reason I would, I brought that up just more as a discussion of it. I don't necessarily think it's something we should do, but some towns allow it. And since we're gonna go through this charter as thoroughly as we should, I think it's something that should have just been brought up for discussion. And again, you can't base it on who's sitting in specific elected positions at this point. It's gotta be what's best overall for the town of Seymour.
That's what, that's where I was going though, because I have to agree with the charter commission. With you in the seat, that would be fine and dandy as far as my concern would go. But an abuse of power or too much power, too many positions, where their focus would be, that would be my concern over the long term, not knowing who's sitting in your seat in the future.
Yeah, I would just, to follow up a little bit, I would just say, the people of Seymour elect a first selectman to do a full-time job for the town of Seymour. I don't think it's right, no matter if the other job, the part-time job, is also representing Seymour. To me, the responsibilities of the position are as a Seymour first selectman. Also, our state reps and state senators that cover Seymour don't just cover Seymour, they cover other towns as well.
Oh, true, yep.
So that's, you know, they would, it's not directly just fighting for Seymour up in Hartford. So, they'd have to split their time to other towns, and that's not something I'm comfortable with.
Okay, Al, you go.
As long as it's a full-time position, as long as first selectman is a full-time position, I'm not comfortable with it.
Right, so we're all in agreeance with that? Elimination of requirement for publication of full text of ordinance. So they agreed with us, thank you very much. You just saved the town a fortune.
There's a lot of trees too.
Particularly when we have to publish the...
Environmentally responsible decision.
These charter changes are gonna cost us about a hundred and fifty grand. Yeah. Hartford Kern's gonna throw a party on us. Alright, removal of Board of Selectmen's secretary, discussed but not recommended.
That seems silly to me, because we could have one or not have one if it's not in the charter.
It's ceremonial, yeah.
It's not required by state statute? Is that's the only like argument I could see for keeping it?
I would argue that the secretary is, in the event that the first selectmen and the deputy are unable to do their duties, the secretary would then step in. But this is actually something Rory and I have talked about. There's really no succession plan. I mean, God forbid something happened.
Start having a designated survivor at every meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, and Chalaca Zirana gets everything about my...
Trish, we'd like you to go down and sit in the boiler room while this meeting goes on. We'll come find you.
Gladly, I'm not ready to go yet.
So again, I think that was not a, I don't think that's a big issue.
No, that's fine, I'm okay with it.
And then, the commission further recommends that the following non-binding advisory question be placed upon the November 2018 ballot. Shall the Board of Selectmen undertake a study regarding the establishment of a town manager form of government? So again, I think it's, I don't think it hurts to have this question on there just to take the, I guess, get an understanding what the residents of the town of Seymour are thinking with regards to a potential change of our form of government. And then, if they are in favor of that, then that's something that we can explore. If not, then we continue on as we are.
My only comment to that is if the study is going to cost, have any funds, that should be a part of the, I don't know what's entailed in the study. If it's just a committee being put together to discuss and review, but if it's anticipated there's funds involved with that, that should be included in the non-binding advisory question.
I think it would just be a review committee. I think the only expenses we would see would be cost of town attorney.
I wouldn't be in favor of spending any money on that.
Yeah, I think it would just be town attorney, that's all.
Just my vote.
Based on the results of the last time we did this, I mean, it was overwhelming against.
Okay.
So, unless there's been a change in the thoughts of the residents, then, but... Okay, so everybody's okay with that? So, at this point, is it okay if we ask the chair a question, or no? I just want to make sure we didn't miss anything else. In here? Yeah. So Pat, is there anything, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Is there anything else of major change that's different that is not on this list? Do you have them with you? Could you? Could I just look at them? I could read them to the board, we can, if that's okay? Okay, so, they have recommended ballot questions, so we'll just go through these. And then, we'll get these copies out to you guys tomorrow. So number one, shall the town charter be amended to change the following? Number one, specify the method of appointment of the deputy registrar of voters. Number two, reduce the size of the Board of Library Directors from seven to five. Three, allow selectmen to participate in meetings via video conference or teleconference. Four, provide for legal notices to be posted on the town website. Five, elimination of the position of captain and lieutenant in the police department. And six, increase the amount of special appropriation requiring a town meeting to one hundred thousand. So let's start with that question. Specify the method of appointment of the deputy registrar of voters. I don't think anybody has any concern with that. Reduce the size of the Board of Library Directors from seven to five, we've already discussed that. Number three, allow selectmen to participate in meetings via video conference or teleconference.
I think we went through that once before. That was on, we asked that, way back. We asked that question. But I think it wasn't on a ballot, it was actually asked...
We got a legal opinion, because I believe the Board of Ed tried to do it.
Yeah, there was legal opinion, it was said no.
So...
That they had to be in person, because if they were taking votes, they had to actually prove that they're the person voting.
Listen, this is something that, you know, a lot of the committees and things that I'm on, we do a lot by teleconference and video conference. I don't think it's, I don't know, I don't necessarily have a problem with that.
Right, I mean, WP say we have, we have, somebody will call in if they can't make a meeting. But as far as the Board of Selectmen...
Well, I think a difference might be between elected and not elected boards, I don't know. I'm not necessarily against it if it's legal, but...
Legal, right, there's no... Alright, number four, so we'll kind of circle back to that one. Number four, provide for legal notices to be posted on the town website. Again, we're all on board with that. Elimination of the position of captain and lieutenant in the police department, we're all on board with that. And number six, increase the amount of special appropriation requiring a town meeting to a hundred thousand. Again, we're all on board on that, so... Alright, so we'll get some feedback, again, from town council. Again, we don't have to do the questions today, but I think this is probably helping us just move through. Question number two, shall the town charter be amended to replace the elected Board of Planning and Zoning with an appointed Planning and Zoning Commission? I think we all agree that that's the direction that we wanted to go. That was in our, I thought that was in our recommendations. So, so we're all still okay with that? Okay. Question number three, shall the town charter be amended to increase the term of the first selectmen from two years to four years? Again, we're all okay with that. Question number four, shall the town charter be amended to set term limits for the first selectmen and the Board of Selectmen? And we're all...
So they broke that out into two separate...
Two separate questions.
That's why I...
Yeah. Yeah, it would have been easier, probably had this, yeah.
Should have thrown something at us.
Yeah. Number five, shall the town charter be amended to change the budget process, including the elimination of the annual town meeting so that the budget will go directly to referendum and to combine the town and Board of Education vote at the referendum? Now again, in the section, and again, Pat, correct me if I'm wrong. Essentially, the Board of Finance would present the budget to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen have the ability to send that back if they choose to. And then, the Board of Finance could then work on it, send it back to the Board of Selectmen, and then it would be forwarded on to referendum for vote. So we don't have to have the town, the town, excuse me, the town meeting. Still have to have the public hearing, though, to give residents the opportunity to voice concern. Residents have the ability to speak as well at the Board of Selectmen meeting when we vote on it. So residents will still be given the same opportunity. So we're all okay with that?
I am okay with most. I am still probably the only one sitting here thinking it's a horrible idea to go back to one budget. I sat in that seat for a long time. I know, once they're combined, you're gonna get a lot more no, 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 no from residents who just don't want their taxes raised. And I personally, sitting on the Board of Finance for many years... And I personally, sitting on the Board of Finance for many years, again, not knowing who's gonna sit there, it's very easy to keep cutting the Board of Ed, cutting the Board of Ed, cutting the Board of Ed, and I think it's gonna hurt them more than having it separated out.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Emery? Okay. Al? Two budgets. Stefan?
I like one budget.
Two bu, two budgets. Two budgets, keeping it as it is. You know, the re...
I wouldn't be adverse to change it if I had some good reason.
Right.
I just think the two budgets constantly pits one side against the other, and we have to stop looking at it as a municipal budget and a Board of Education budget, that it's a Town of Seymour budget that impacts taxes.
You're pulling from one pool, in my opinion, you know?
Yeah.
You don't, you don't pay two different tax bills to the Board of Ed and to the town.
And when you see, if you go back in the, in the history of the people who have voted, or when budgets have been voted down, it's often the town budget that passes before the education budget, which I think kind of weaponizes people against the Board of Education, which I don't think is right.
I don't disagree that that's the perception, but being involved as long as I have, pre, when the budget was combined to when it was separated, I do completely agree it can look divided on the ballot, but also before that, you will notice how many budgets were simply voted down and voted down and voted down, and how many Board of Finance meetings during my tenure and prior, who always got hit? It was the Board of Education where we took the money from, because they had the largest budget. And we had no control over it. So, I'm not saying everybody sitting in the seat today, or when I was there, would do that, but I've been involved for a long time and saw it hit, hurt the Board of Ed more than I think having it separated out would. And I think as long as communication, you know, I think all the town can do is communicate in conjunction with the Board of Education and vice versa to show that it is not divided, there are simply two questions. Again, I respect your opinion, I understand there's a lot of people who want it together again, because of that perception. And dealing with nos on the Board of Ed and yeses for the town, but if you look back to when it was combined and we go back to that system, I think both the town and the Board of Ed are gonna be hurt more than keeping it separate.
Okay, I, I obviously respect your opinion on it, as you have a lot of experience in this issue. My one question would be then, does the Board of Education not get hurt just as much if people continually vote down just the Board of Education side? Because then you can only cut from the Board of Education side. If, if the practical application of the one budget is that you usually take more money from the Board of Ed, well, at least that's not required that you take money from the Board of Ed.
Understood, but there was a lot of divisiveness when the Board of Ed then simply cut the majority of the money each time from the Board of Ed. So then there wasn't that communication together outwardly or together, and there was the divisiveness between the two and out in the public that they saw many times. So that's my experience and why I prefer to keep it the two budgets. I can't speak to thirty years ago, but...
It's interesting, but if, if I hadn't known Stefan of Trish's opinions and others that have served before, I was, when this first happened, I was vehemently against it, because I thought that the kids would get hurt. And obviously, the children of a town and a school system have to be strong for the town to grow also. And I thought it was gonna be a deadly issue for our town. And it, and it turns out, it hasn't hurt it as much as, as Trish was saying, as you perceive. But if I didn't hear anecdotal evidence from like Trish and other people, I would've thought the same thing. I would've been trying to get it back to one again, because how long has it been since it's been two separate?
It's been quite a while now, but I think...
Like twelve, ten, twelve years?
Oh, yeah.
Right?
The problem when it's together and the Board of Ed keeps getting cut, is it then does pit the Board of Finance, which is the town, that's perceptually the town, against the Board of Ed.
Emery? I mean, I, I'm, I'm for combining it into one, into one budget, but, I mean, I hear what other people are saying, so.
Well, I think this might be another good case where you put it up to the voters.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I, I guess the only drawback to that is I guess the scope of the question, so we'd have to cut that question down. Or peel out, make it, instead of six questions, make it seven. And have, shall the town charter be amended to change the budget process, including the elimination of the annual town meeting so that the budget will go directly to referendum as one question? And then two, combine the Board, or excuse me, combine the town and the Board of Education vote at the referendum. I think we'd have to split the question in half.
I'd like a little more discussion on it before we put this...
Well, again, these are just questions, we're not doing anything on the questions, this is for our discussion.
I'd like to hear why you feel it should be one again, and I'd like to hear maybe from some other folks too, I mean, not that I don't trust your opinion or Trish's, but I'd like to get a little more data on it.
I just think the, we've been very fortunate the last couple of years, and I think a lot of that has to do with process and, and things like that, but in the past, the Board of Education does turn into the whipping post where the town budget goes through. I mean, you can, the municipal budget could increase fifteen percent, and it'll slide through, the Board of Ed budget can go up a half a percent, but people just wanna beat on it because they don't have control.
Right.
I'm not sure that that's the best way, I think the Board of Education budget's gonna get beat up regardless. The question is, is the municipal side of the budget gonna take some of that abuse along with it? And if you look at what we're trying to do and break down, you know, these two silos that we talk about all the time, that we're merging technology, we're merging operations, we're talking about merging
It's gotta happen.
finance and HR.
Yep.
We really need to look at this as one budget, not two separate entities, and I think if we can do that, we kind of take away some of that stigma where we're just beating up on the, on the Board of Ed, because we don't have control of it. When I say we, you know what I mean?
That, that's a very fair point where we're sharing services, but again, I want to remind everyone why we went to two budgets in the first place, because it was asking the public where they wanted the money cut from one area or from the municipal, municipal area, because we kept cutting areas in town and getting very resentful doing that, when the people coming out to meetings or speaking up or showing up anyplace, it all had to do with education. Fair or not, I'm, I'm a big advocate of supporting both. And I don't want either hurt, but combining them overall now hurts both.
What if we wanted to change something drastic? Could Board of Selectmen do that? As an example, we don't wanna send the budget anymore to referendum vote. Is that something that this board could do? And, yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Wouldn't you have to change it from a town to a city to do that?
Yeah.
I don't know, so...
No, I don't think it has to do with the population.
No, I think it has to do with how you're...
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
But is that something that could even be done? I mean, assuming that there's no holdup on form of government and things like that?
There are other municipalities that do that.
Are they towns, Stefan, or they, they're not cities?
I, I don't know the distinction.
I don't know of any town that does.
That's why I think it's based on how your voting process, of like, I think it's fair that it depends...
What I'm saying, but let's say, but could this board do something like that?
I mean, possibly, Ryan would have to look into it, or Brian or Rich.
I don't know a hundred percent I wanna look into it.
So...
What I would like to do, because I don't wanna tell you the wrong answer.
Right, well, that's not, that's not...
But you're asking, so the taxpayers don't have a say in the town's budget at all?
Well, taxpayers have a say, because they pick the people who create the budget. I'm just putting, I'm not saying I'm for this or against it, I'm just asking the question if that's something that could be done. Because now that takes the concern that everyone has of one side of the budget getting beat up over the other. It's just now the Board of Finance is gonna make recommendations, send it to the Board of Selectmen, and the seven members of the Board of Selectmen are gonna act as opposed to a referendum vote. It's just, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying I'm for it.
I'd love to be here for the first like ten mil increase under that new...
I'm not saying I'm for it, I'm, I'm just saying it's...
God, help us when we're not here.
Because, I mean, you know, turnout at the referendum votes for the...
Then we will need a designated survivor.
It's actually getting smaller and smaller, so. I don't know. Again, I'm not, I, I like the fact that people vote, personally, I like that, but I'm just...
Even if it's only two hundred people.
Yeah, it's still they vote, I mean, the old days, it was a town meeting, people showed up. At the, at the middle school, they came in, we put the budget out, people walked up one at a time, they voted, we counted, and we were done.
Yeah. Yeah.
Now, if there was fifty people, fifty people made the decision. So.
What's the average turnout for a vote?
Now, a budget one?
Budget?
You get eleven or twelve hundred, it's a lot.
Then we get like eight hundred this year?
This should be a nice something.
Nice something?
Mm-hmm.
I like that they get it's because they're so happy, but...
Yeah, that's probably it.
That's just what I'm gonna go with. Probably not the reason, but...
They heard about the mill rate stabilization fund and, you know.
Tell them.
The increased bond ratings, of course, they heard about. They realized S and P had taken a favorable view of our finances, so they, you know, we, we'll stay home now.
You want the three-minute version and the five-minute version, 'cause I got multiple options. So, but could you just look into that, just out of curiosity? I'm not saying, I'm not saying we do it, I just, more out of curiosity. Okay. Well, that's what we're gonna check into.
I know, but I don't like that.
Let's do it tonight. I say we say council be damned, let's do it right now.
Stefan made a motion, but anyone like to seconds, taking the people completely out of the voting process? Now, this is the point where we all just turn and look at him. Rory, if you can make sure the camera has moved squarely on him.
Do we have a spotlight?
It's the town meeting.
Okay, and then the last question, and obviously this is a simple one, shall the town charter be amended to correct grammar, spelling, terminology, statutory reference, outdated provisions of the town charter, renumber sections to make other, and technical changes as recommended by the Charter Revision Commission? I think we're all...
So does this cover like typos and everything that they fix?
Yeah.
Okay, I was gonna ask about that, cool.
Yep.
On the, um...
Just a comment, what we did is we, if you're looking at the current charter, you'll see amended with a date, so we took that one out, directed a lot of grammar. As far as the organization of the charter itself, we kind of put that in somewhat a day, chopped down, started the way it was, went into powers and duties, and then all of a sudden we talk about the Bureau of Education. So we put selecting, Board of Selectmen, we looked at the, the elected positions out. So now when we read the charter, hopefully it will make more sense when we're looking at duties and powers of the selectmen than reading about the Bureau of Education.
That does get confusing. That does get confusing.
Just a little bit.
Yeah.
Can we get back to the questions for a minute?
Yeah, the questions were just meant as a guide for the document itself, but we're not voting on questions.
But when we talk about going to vote for the term limit, you know, I know we had a lot of discussion about that, so I make sure that if, if we do put that on the the voting ballot, that it says a term limit for Town of Seymour representatives. So I wanna make sure that it's perfectly clear they don't think that it's for the Senate or...
Shall the town charter be amended to set term limits for the first selectmen and the Board of Selectmen?
The Town of Seymour, I just wanna make sure it has the Town of Seymour in it. This way, there is no misconception of...
Fair enough, fair enough. Okay. I'm sure George Temple will be happy to hear that, but he's not getting...
Listen, you never...
I'm just teasing. Yep, so, but again, we're not voting on this, so this is something that we can work on. This is just more of a guide for us.
You never know.
And then I asked Rory just to go back through if there's any cleanup things, so we'll go to just different sections. And we're, we talk, the chief of police.
Yeah.
The successor to the current chief shall be required to sign a five-year contract, which will detail the terms of employment. And I thought we were gonna eliminate the current chief language, since it's not specific and would then apply to whomever the current chief is. Patrick? And I'm trying to find the section quickly while we're talking, because I think what it says is the next chief will be required... Is that language gonna get cleaned up? Because when the language was created, and I, I'm gonna call this the Metzler language, it was created for the person after Mike Metzler. Now that Mike Metzler's no longer here, and the chief has to have a contract, to your point of kind of cleaning up the past stuff, should it just be the chief of police needs to have a three-year contract, or?
That was a question I had, actually. I don't think we're supposed to be doing this back and forth.
Oh, we're not allowed to do the back and forth?
We didn't go into that meeting with them.
Because we're clarifying just sections.
Tell me your question.
Right.
Yeah. Yes.
For your own purposes, to discuss it amongst yourselves, if that was changed.
Okay, so did you address that? Just yes or no?
It's a yes, no.
You didn't read it, did you?
Yes. Okay, alright.
There it is now.
There it is, thank you.
There it is.
And then section eleven point two. With the exception of town council and engineer, all administrative appointments to appointive town boards and all appointive town offices shall be filled by persons who are electors of the town. Any person who is elector of the town at the time of his appointment to any town board and thereafter, some, so on and so forth, so. This comes up, we had, if you remember, a few years ago, we had an issue with appointing people to the, I believe it was the downtown committee that own businesses downtown, but we're not Seymour electors, so that kind of cleans that up. But to the point, there are three appointed, the selectmen, first selectmen can appoint three positions, town council, town engineer, and the first selectmen's assistant.
Which is in twelve point one.
Twelve point one four?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a new number, twelve point one. Twelve point one, sorry. Twelve point one, first selectmen's administrative assistant, first selectmen administrative assistant shall be an appointment of the first selectmen and shall serve as his direction until a successor has been appointed and shall perform such duties as first selectmen require.
But if we go back to eleven point two, does that nullify it? Because we're saying that other than the town, other than town council and town, town engineer, all administrative appointments need to be town residents.
It'll nullify that, of course.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Alright, so then, alright, so I'd like to make a motion that we, we ask the Charter Revision Commission to review section eleven point two eligibility and add a first selectmen's administrative assistant to town council and town engineer. Okay. Motion by Al.
Second.
Second by Emery, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying, chair will tie, motion passes five zero.
Aye.
And then section twelve point nine. This is actually easier, now that I look at it. The file. It says, the Parks Commission shall have the authority and responsibility to allocate and schedule the use of playing fields and use of the park pavilions with preference given to the Board of Education activities. Such schedules shall be posted on the town website. And then just, we need to put a plan in place, because this is a significant workload shift. So that's more procedural. And then two things, we still do not have a procedure in place to remove, for removal of elected officials of elected officials in the event of no resignation and no chain of succession in case of catastrophe. Is it possible to remove an elected official?
No.
All right. So that answers that. That answers that, remember what? That's a yes or no question, Patrick.
What, what...
It's a yes or no question, Pat.
Pat, Pat, Pat.
Did you, Pat, did you just not hear me get yelled at?
Now I'm going to get one.
We shall discuss very soon.
These are just Rory's notes to me. I'm just kind of talking out loud, I'm not...
I appreciate that.
Yeah. Pat's a parliamentarian, so he knows. All right. So no chain of succession in case of, yeah.
He's going to fill a box.
He's going to fill a box. No chain of succession in case of catastrophe. How would we even, how would we even do that?
What was it, Stephanie?
I don't know, to be honest with you. I don't. I mean, knock on wood, we've been here for 168 years, we haven't had a problem, so.
That will be, that will be fine. That will be fine.
Yeah.
He just jinxed us. Will you knock on the table, please?
Well, listen, if that thing starts, that means I just got wiped out, so.
Knock on the table.
What, you think this is wood? I'm surprised. So, but again, that's just things that I think maybe we can talk about. Well, let me ask you, if we put, would a chain of succession need to be in the charter? I mean, so let's say we've kept the secretary, so theoretically, we have the first selectman, the deputy, and now the secretary. I mean, if those three people went, there would still be four members, they could vote to refill the spots, but, and I would assume if all seven, something happened, all seven of us or four of the seven of us, they'd hold a special election or something. But I guess it's more the day-to-day operations of the town. All right. So let's maybe that's...
That's also an interesting, that's also an interesting question based on how it's written here, if we put the secretary into the chain of succession. Because the secretary is allowed to be from any party, whereas the successor is supposed to be from the ruling party.
Yeah.
So. And it's also not possible to dictate that the secretary has to be from the same party as the first selectman based on minority representation rules.
Yeah.
So. It's an interesting thing to look at.
Yeah. Okay.
Which actually, one other thing that I just wanted to...
No, no, keep going, keep going.
Is the way it's written, I'm not sure if it was updated or not, but the way it's written right now, if I'm correct, is if the first selectman moves on and we have to replace the first selectman in the middle of the term, we first select a new first selectman.
You first select a new...
Or you first select a new selectman.
You first select a new selectman.
And then you pick from the select...
From the seven.
Is that written in here explicitly?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I must have misread it then.
It's just because how, I know that's how we've done it in the past. When, the last time where that actually took place was John O'Toole. When he left, Frank Conroy was appointed to the board and then appointed first selectman.
Yeah, that was my question because, you know, theoretically, people who are on Board of Selectmen could not want that position or not be able to take that position.
Right.
So. Okay. Sorry.
Okay. All right. So we only have one or two things then to discuss with the Charter Revision Commission, so I think we're in good shape there.
And just on the public works?
Public works, a number. Go to 1211?
New number?
New number, 1211.
New number. Yep, good.
So we're at second to last paragraph. Disposal of garbage, rubbish, and ashes and operating the transfer station slash and slash for sanitary landfill. Take out sanitary landfill, we will never have sanitary landfill.
How do we do that?
How do you take out language?
Yeah.
You just have to... That recommendation page. Do you actually with that, as you made it?
Okay. All right. So then I'll entertain a motion to remove and/or sanitary landfill from Section 12.11, Board of Public Works. So moved.
Second.
By Stephon, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Rory, you got it?
Yeah.
Okay. Just make sure we don't miss anything. All right. So anything else? So we're comfortable, I think, with the vast majority of this, just a few little odds and ends?
There's a he and she's, you know, he slash.
Yeah, I can't, yeah. That's...
Do something about what?
Well, it says he.
Pick a pronoun.
Pick a pronoun.
Yeah. You can say in the beginning, just say...
All right. Well, we can bring that...
Whatever, it's not to be... I have language work.
Okay. So we're good on everything else now? The he, she, that can be considered part of the language cleanup?
Yeah.
Okay. So nothing else on number seven? No? Okay. Number eight, appointments. We have no appointments before us. Number nine, tax refunds and abatements. Okay. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to accept the tax collector's report as presented for August 21st, 2018. So moved. Motion by Stephon, second by Anne Marie. Under discussion, just take a second review, make sure you have no conflicts. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Our next item on the agenda is item number 10, transfers. There's one slight change to this transfer. If everyone can go down to the description where it says use of fund balance, it is actually the debt service fund. If you can just make that. Okay. So Control Number Two, Control Number, yes, excuse me, Control, item number two, the request is coming from my office. The amount of the request, $499,999.99. That money will move out of the debt service fund and will move into Capital Fire Truck Line. Again, the transfer is to provide funds needed for the purchase of a new engine that was approved earlier in the meeting. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve Control Number Two in the amount of $499,999.99. Motion by Trish, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. This transfer will now be forwarded to the Board of Finance for action and then assuming they approve it, we'll come back for a special town meeting. So Rory, can you set up for a special town meeting for...
All right.
Tuesday, September 4th, please. We have a few pieces of correspondence. We have the check register. We have a letter that Rich sent to Advanced Energy Efficiency LLC with regards to Z-Rex and things that they feel that they have a contract with the town on. And then the other is that Bunge Road, West Church Street, Botchedford Road has been funded through the Lot Set Program in the amount for $2,602,480. So that will run from the Seymour Historical Society up to the three-way intersection at the high school and then from the four-way intersection at the high school up to the top of Great Hill Road. So, okay, so that's just, that's a good thing. So Brian Asteriak will continue work on that. There's a process, bless you, that he has to go to. Our hope is that we can be out to bid at some point next summer. The reason the cost is so high is Brian's goal is to make it people able to walk from the Historical Society essentially all the way to the high school. So sidewalks, everything. So that's why it's taken a little longer than we had anticipated. Brian is certainly going beyond, above and beyond like he normally does.
We should be putting sidewalks in everywhere we can, in my opinion, so that's a great thing.
Yeah. So it's, I mean, it's a good thing. So, item number 12, public comment. Is there any public comments? Is there any public comments? Hearing no public comment, move on to item number 13, selectman, public comment. Stephon?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. Al?
I'm good.
All right. Anne Marie?
I'm good.
Trish?